Yes, I did do. All right, by my watch, I have six o'clock, so at this time we will move into our main meeting here in Nantahala School, as always. Mr. Bryan, thank you, they take adequate care of us back in the cafeteria. We're all to an agreement that if we fall asleep, we'll nudge each other and go from there, because I think we all are eight. So, this time, welcome, and if you would, we're gonna have, if you would, everyone stand, we have our moment of silence. Tommy, if you would please.
You used to always do this just for veterans, now that I got to think about it, and with our law enforcement and firefighters, they're in about as much danger as veterans anymore. So, we'd like to include them by our edge of our own society, remember them. Amen. Thank you.
And, Mr. Bryan, if you would, at this time, we're ready for our children to come out, or they can show us up.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Who do we have here, Mr. Bryan?
Mine.
And y'all are what, quite brave, are y'all in?
Second.
Okay. And you're too brave enough to come up here by yourselves, the two of you, as a group, that's good. Y'all sort of do the pledge, which is even better, because I listen to you. Well, thank y'all for your honesty.
Thank you guys.
Very good. All board members received, and they sent out minutes of our regular scheduled meeting back in April 24th. Have a chance to review those minutes. Were there any corrections? Questions? I would entertain a motion. So, blue, a motion to approve, do your second. A motion, second, all in favor, say my saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, in your post. Some have adopted the agenda, were there any additions, Dr. Baldwin?
No.
John, if we need to make a change? If not, then I would entertain a motion that we adopt the agenda as presented, and do your second.
Second.
And a motion, second, all in favor, say my saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, in your post, black sign. Very good. Spotlight on people and programs, Dr. Baldwin, you or Mr. Bryan, one, two, ankles for us, please.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we're here in Nantahala tonight to recognize two of our faculty and staff members for support person of the year, well, as teacher of the year. I first would like to recognize, county's counselor, Ken Bateman, as support person of the year. Next, I'd like to recognize the teacher of the year, Ms. Diane Raxter, she is our second and third grade teacher.
Congratulations to both of you. You know, both of you doing outstanding jobs, we're very proud of you.
Thank you.
Any other presentation, Jim, Dr. Baldwin?
No.
Hearing none, public comment, I don't see anyone, but maybe there is someone here who'd like to address the board at this time, or appear to public comment, so we'll open the floor to hear anything that anyone would like to say to us. Here's any takers, so, at this time, we'll say public comment is closed. Mr. Hining, if you would please, lead us into the reasons for that we would go into closed session.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, one thing in the GS 143-18.16, to get to the qualifications, competence, and fitness, initially, there was an addition of additional employment on the number of potential also employed, prospecting, and also, and GS 143-18.3, our sole patent attorney, the owner, anybody, both body, and preserve the attorney on purpose, between the attorney and the both body, whichever is hereby engaged.
Regarding the reasons, do I hear motion that we move into closed session this time? A motion, your second. A motion, second, all in favor, say my saying aye. Aye, in your post. Some move. Mr. Bryan, will we be able to go into the?
Absolutely. How many chairs? How many chairs?
There'll be... How many can you see? We'll adjust.
I can adjust as many as you.
Aye.
Okay, very well.
Go.
We were saying...
You know, it really, you really like people. He said that was good on him, and he loved that.
But we have to...
They have to do it once, and then turn it.
No, that's Mr. Gibbs here.
What, what, Dr. Terry?
Okay.
What, Dr. Terry?
Everybody's cold.
I'm trying to be picky, but...
And then last night, because that was cold. In fact, before.
All right, at this time, I think we're gonna, I will entertain a motion that the board return into open session. Thank you. A motion, second, end of discussion, hearing none, all in favor, say my saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, in your post. Some move. Information items being transferred, none of the items, at this writing, all the board members had a chance to look over overnight at this trip request, were there any questions? From any items that they saw? I don't hear any other.
Is that, is that, Coach Lam, is that the only, was there a third trip on that volleyball? Was it just two? Let me ask it, I'm just...
They're going June 3rd, 24th, 1st, and 22nd. She initially had some...
She got 24th.
Yeah, she had initially had some other ones, but we cut those off at the start of school.
All right, perfect, that's great, okay. Thank you. I think they're both in grades.
All the cards played.
Anderson? Great.
Any other questions? If not, entertain a motion that we approve the trip request as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve the trip request as presented.
Do your second. A motion, say it, all in favor, say my saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, in your post. Some move. FBLA, Future Presidents of America, Mr. Williams not here, I think everyone's had a chance to, I think they're raising funds for their trip to California. Is that right? Another, one of the people taking place, isn't it? Michelle. A bake sale, which is standard. And then Nantahala? I think that was just, this was your generic, wasn't it, Mr. Bryan, about the one that would be coming up for next year? Kind of overview?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, there's three, four new items that were highlighted on the sheet, poncetta sale for the high school. Donor choose, which is a website that a teacher can go on, put a project on, and people donate to that project, and then the website sends the item to the school, so there's no money, the teacher's not receiving money, they're receiving the project idea. Last year, you approved the Duke UNC viewing party, that was a great success in our gym, and the sponsors, or the high school teachers would like to also be able to include Super Bowl, possible national championship, or even having a movie night, not charging for any of these viewings, only the concessions that are sold at these events. The last one, believe it or not, is a bass tournament on Nantahala Lake, this is sponsored by, brought to us by Mr. Daniel Lopp. He has spoken with the game wardens to make sure that any permits needed, they're free, they're applied for, and you basically, each boat pays an entry fee, they fish for eight hours, they come back, they weigh the fish, the winning boat gets 50% of the entry fee, and the host gets the other half, which would be Nantahala School. They are also looking to sell hot dogs, hamburgers, and things like that down there at the boat launch site. You pass that as you come across Warrior, the launch site. So, you'd like to have one, if possible, in September, and then one in May, and it's not uncommon to have over 30 boats at these events. So, something new for our area, and just like to ask your consideration for these fundraising ideas.
What's the entry?
Excuse me?
What's the entry?
$60 usually per boat.
One question.
They'll pay that much to fish.
Bass tournament, as always, I go to liability for the school system, if we're here in the sponsor, safety water, because of what it is, or, it sounds good, or we open ourselves up for anything.
I want to double check that, because I think there are callouts in your policy for inland marine, and it's just not covered, and I don't know if typically that means, are they, and I'm sorry, I was distracted by something else.
Sure.
Are they gonna use, how are they boating, or is it just on the shore?
People show up with their boats, they have to have all the safety devices to get out on the water, because the game wardens are there checking their flotation devices, they go out and they fish, and they come back. They're not children, they're not students at all.
That's what I'm saying.
This is general public.
That's actually, this is because we basically give it our support, and the school would be the sponsor and see that we're not opening ourselves up for anything. Hope not, it sounds like a good opportunity for them.
No, I think it's fine, I think, I think, as always, if we can do a waiver kind of a form that says, you know, you would recognize the risk here, and you're not responsible for any of that, that would be okay.
Okay.
I think it sounds fine. I might do it.
Take your, take your pontoon now, there, enjoy.
Challenge is a good issue.
Oh, empty step.
Another question I had is, the UNC Duke game, what color was predominant over here? It better be the right color, this is a loaded question, by the way.
I wasn't in attendance, I'm a Florida State fan, so...
Oh, my gosh.
You went to the all the way.
I'm just teasing. Any other?
But it was a good turnout.
I might go back and get away at first, but I'll make sure.
A motion to approve, do your second, end of discussion. If not, all in favor, say my saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, in your post. Some move. Thank you, Mr. Bryan.
Thanks, sir.
Personal report, everyone, we have to check it over, there were some corrections and changes we made, which we incorporated, so, this time, entertain a motion that we approve the personal report.
I'll make a motion to approve the personal report, with changes and adding JB coaches for Highlands Volleyball, and assistant JB coach for volleyball, will be the same as the varsity.
Do your second.
Second.
End of discussion. If not, all in favor, say my saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, in your post. Some move.
Thanks, sir.
Personal report, everyone, we have to check it over, there were some corrections and changes we made, which we incorporated, so, this time, entertain a motion that we approve the personal report.
I'll make a motion to approve the personal report, with changes and adding JB coaches for Highlands Volleyball, and assistant JB coach for volleyball, will be the same as the varsity.
Do your second.
Second.
End of discussion. All in favor, say my saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, in your post. Some move.
Thanks, sir.
Personal report, everyone, we have to check it over, there were some corrections and changes we made, which we incorporated, so, this time, entertain a motion that we approve the personal report.
I'll make a motion to approve the personal report, with changes and adding JB coaches for Highlands Volleyball, and assistant JB coach for volleyball, will be the same as the varsity.
Do your second.
Second.
End of discussion. All in favor, say my saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, in your post. Some move. Policy, Mr. Gibbs.
Yes, sir, contract with May County Parks Recreation, use their facilities by summer adventure camp. Standards to better, as long as summer adventure camp.
Sorry, I got distracted.
I was talking to the towel, and I'm like, okay, I didn't do it this time, so, it usually
helps work.
I'm glad you bring that, that's a dollar.
This is standard, this is what we have every year.
Yes, sir.
Okay. We have the contract with Parks for our summer camp, any, any other discussion?
Make a motion to accept this as a...
A motion to accept, do your second.
Second.
All in favor, say my saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, in your post. Some move. School nutrition meal prices, David, hey, I'm sorry, a lot of people between you and me, I didn't see you.
This is to approve milk prices for the 2017-18 school year, as part of law, Section 205 of Healthy, Hunger-Free Kids Act of 2010, where it's required to do milk price increases every year, and there's a PLE, so, paid lunch check, to be told that the state provides us to come up with these prices each year, and it's gonna be a 10 cent increase for K4, and 5, and 8, and 9 through 12 schools.
So, that's, that's meant, that's by the state, we have to do that, or by our own cause, I'm sorry.
It's by law, if you do not go up, then the, the school board has to write a check to make up for the funds, so...
We don't do it. Any other questions? I need to take a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Do your second.
Second.
Motion, second, all in favor, say my saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, in your post. I think we got three, at least, out of that. Okay. Nantahala School, student handbook, Mr. Bryan, if you could, just point out any changes.
No changes, no changes, they don't think we'll change, or update our food, our meal prices.
That's what I'm trying to tell you about.
Otherwise, I didn't go ahead and pass.
I'll make a motion to approve handbook as presented.
Do your second.
Second.
A motion, say, all in favor, say my saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, in your post. So, moved. All right, Mr. Hining.
Mr. Chairman, I will be as brief as possible.
I suggest hardly that that be the case.
Well, first policy, 3420, dealing with student promotion accountability, we do have a little bit of discussions about, however, this policy is not in the normal course of updates, not the reason that I bring it to you tonight, it actually was part of the manual that we looked at last, at this time last year. We held up on this policy for a couple of reasons, there are two of them, in Section G, credit by demonstrated mastery, that was a number thing at that point, and the ability of students to retake classes that had not been failed, that's in Section H, repeating of course for credit. So, we held up because we wanted to score a little further and make sure we were, for one, repeating of course for credit when the student has not failed, it is not a danger. You have to offer it to students who have failed. I don't know whether, in the year that's passed since then, whether we've been offering the ability for students to retake classes for credit. Yes, we offer those opportunities, not, I don't know that we've ever had a case where we offered a course for it, but I'm right. Right. So, again, you have to when the student has failed the class, and you don't know whether they've taken, retaken it before.
I think there was one in Highlands, and it was because their grade kept them out of a certificate program for nursing, but that was the only one that I was aware of.
Okay. So, apparently, it's not, at least as a mount, it's not been a, a large amount of demand for that.
Can I interrupt for a second, I'm sorry? Mr. Chiles, someone said your hand went up.
I just listened, I believe the NCAA, we've had students to go through, and then pass the course, I think in NCAA, you get one, two, three, or four, is that right, when they give them a grade out for you? Mr. Chiles, is this?
Yeah.
For courses, you get one, two, three, and four, and some of our athletes were allowed to retake a course in order to try to get that score up, one, two, one is a good, I believe, or four good, one, two, three, and four, but it enhanced the, the, I'm thinking of one person, who went to Tennessee, and played at Tennessee, repeated a course in order to go up a grade, or whatever it is, a score, he had to have a two, or he had to have a three to be in there, and he took it over and got a three, but the grade that he had, just, I think it lined out for a two, but that was the NCAA situation.
We're talking, and I couldn't, I'm looking at...
Is that, am I picking up what you're talking about?
So, if this, if we do this, what you're saying is we need to incorporate, this minute will allow that to take place, correct?
Will allow it to take place, it also sets up standards by which, you know, it's not, it's not for your high flyers, it's not for a student who had a B+, and then wanted an A+, and so, taking again to try to move forward, it sets the standard that it has to be C or lower, the student must make a written request, the board's principal or the seats must be available in the class.
That's just part of my question, so, does this, does our policy state that children that have precedence for those that would be failing, they have the precedence, or we get preferential, they would be first, only if they have room, then these other students will be available?
Yes, sir.
And does this move, run into any increased cost, where if we don't have a number, whatever, we had students doing that, just to raise grades, did that result in increased cost to us, where we have to pay more teachers to do that? If that's the case, I wonder why we would. Now, I understand for children might be failing, but just raising.
Okay, so...
I guess my, the question is, why would we have a policy just to do that, just for the sake of doing it? If it's gonna result in increased cost or...
So, the change, there was a change in school board, the state school board policy last year that made it possible, didn't even offer.
But there's also a stipulation, there must be space available, I presume, so that's assigned to those students who are taking the course, or if they're paying for their course.
And it's at the high school level only, so, you're not talking about...
I understand that, yeah.
But a class, I shouldn't think it happened.
What Nancy said, is probably this young lady in Highlands, it made a difference for her, getting her chance to go on, so, I think the principals still has control over not abusing it, but maybe giving these people opportunity to continue on their course.
And I think that's the most likely outcome, is that we're talking about if you're in a letter grade, you see you're lower in the class, and you need to retake it in order to be admitted, or qualify for a scholarship, or something along those lines, it's the kind of thing that might make that difference.
Now, the rule for, the rule for NCAA athlete, now, this has progressed over the years, if I'm not mistaken, they not take them in summer after.
I think the comments answered my question, so, basically, we're at a stage where only bedroom, then we can, we can consider doing it, we're not under any grounds to expand classes, just to accommodate students, I want to try to do that, and I'm looking at Nancy Carroll, and if long as we do that, we're not gonna, it shouldn't incur any additional cost to expand the classes, or anything like that, correct?
Correct.
Or could it result in that? Okay, I'll show it.
John, I'm not from the boards, but I already can, can you explain, credit by demonstrated mastery, particularly beginning with 2014, taking the Super Bowl, shout out.
And this may be another place where we need to get the input of our capable administrators about whether they have, this is, this has been the law for a little while now, and I know we had some discussion about it when it first came into being, I seem to remember Nancy, you kind of let them through what it is, because it's...
Yeah, we had the opportunity, no one has taken advantage of it in our county to this point.
To give you the background on what it is, it is a, another fairly new change in state board policy that said, where certain classes, a student can, I mean...
Test that.
Qualify in a certain, yeah, through certain testing, and also, I think in some, in like CTE classes, it's a, it's more like a body of work kind of thing.
Well, it all starts with testing.
Right.
And if they get a certain, I think they have more than 95% talent, and then, they do a portfolio for, like you said, some type of project, that a committee works at. Most kids don't get past the testing, and we've looked, we've been shown in our western region, how many kids take the test, and how many actually pass it, and it's very few. That includes the EOCs, or the NC finals, or even the CTE, very few get past that, so, it's pretty rigorous.
And you're required to offer it in some way, it's supposed to be possible to try to take it, but it's, there's no guarantee that any students can place out of it, because there are high stakes to do.
Do you have additional concerns? That's all.
No, sorry, I just wanted to make sure that the board understood what that is, that's that's school board policy.
Well, you asked, I thought you might have something underneath the surface, we'll make sure we... Okay?
And then, Mr. Chairman, unless there are any questions about that policy, or any of the rest of them have entertained any of those, wise, these are all ready for your consideration.
Any board members have any questions? Or anyone that, or any of those that you want John to focus on in more detail? Do your second, yes, one takers? Well, it was the board's pleasure, would you like to approve these?
I think they're all second reading.
No, they're not.
They are, well, some of them we had on, they're on, they're noted on there as second reading, because we did have them last month, but again, your new policies, your new policy, you can change this, if the board wants to have a required second reading for every amendment to existing policy, you can do that, but your current policy say, if it's an amendment to an existing policy, you can just take it on.
No, 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 it's all...
I read it over, yes, but I read it over, and I passed, Dr. Baldwin, he had, and he got his opinion, and I laughed, and I mean, he said, I had to look it over to see anything drastic change, and if you're comfortable, do the decision on it. Entertain a motion, so, move. Your motion being that we approve all of the amendments as presented.
All of them.
A motion to approve all of the policy updates as presented, do I hear a second?
Second.
Do your second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say my saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, in your post. So, moved. All right, personnel report, everyone, we have to check it over, there were some corrections and changes we made, which we incorporated, so, this time, entertain a motion that we approve the personnel report.
I'll make a motion to approve the personnel report, with changes and adding JB coaches for Highlands Volleyball, and assistant JB coach for volleyball, will be the same as the varsity.
Do your second.
Second.
End of discussion. All in favor, say my saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, in your post. So, moved. Policy, Mr. Gibbs.
Yes, sir, contract with May County Parks Recreation, use their facilities by summer adventure camp, standards to better, as long as summer adventure camp.
Sorry, I got distracted.
I was talking to the towel, and I'm like, okay, I didn't do it this time, so, it usually
helps work.
I'm glad you bring that, that's a dollar.
This is standard, this is what we have every year.
Yes, sir.
Okay. We have the contract with Parks for our summer camp, any, any other discussion?
Make a motion to accept this as a...
A motion to accept, do your second.
Second.
All in favor, say my saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, in your post. So, moved. Policy, Mr. Gibbs.
Yes, sir, contract with May County Parks Recreation, use their facilities by summer adventure camp, standards to better, as long as summer adventure camp.
Sorry, I got distracted.
I was talking to the towel, and I'm like, okay, I didn't do it this time, so, it usually
helps work.
I'm glad you bring that, that's a dollar.
This is standard, this is what we have every year.
Yes, sir.
Okay. We have the contract with Parks for our summer camp, any, any other discussion?
Make a motion to accept this as a...
A motion to accept, do your second.
Second.
All in favor, say my saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, in your post. So, moved. School nutrition meal prices, David, hey, I'm sorry, a lot of people between you and me, I didn't see you.
This is to approve milk prices for the 2017-18 school year, as part of law, Section 205 of Healthy, Hunger-Free Kids Act of 2010, where it's required to do milk price increases every year, and there's a PLE, so, paid lunch check, to be told that the state provides us to come up with these prices each year, and it's gonna be a 10 cent increase for K4, and 5, and 8, and 9 through 12 schools.
So, that's, that's meant, that's by the state, we have to do that, or by our own cause, I'm sorry.
It's by law, if you do not go up, then the, the school board has to write a check to make up for the funds, so...
We don't do it. Any other questions? I need to take a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Do your second.
Second.
Motion, second, all in favor, say my saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, in your post. So, moved. Nancy, amended the exception, children's contract with Mr. Rush.
I just wanted to amend the contract that we currently have, it originally said that it would end May 26th, but I would like to have Mr. Rush work with the homebound student throughout the summer, ending August 27th.
Okay. The money's what come from?
Easy.
I'll make a motion to approve this contract as next as presented.
A motion to approve, do your second.
Second.
Motion, second, all in favor, say my saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, in your post. So, moved. All right, Mr. Hining.
Mr. Chairman, I will be as brief as possible.
I suggest hardly that that be the case.
Well, first policy, 3420, dealing with student promotion accountability, we do have a little bit of discussions about, however, this policy is not in the normal course of updates, not the reason that I bring it to you tonight, it actually was part of the manual that we looked at at last, at this time last year.[917.12]
Who went to Tennessee and played for Tennessee, repeated a course in order to go up a grade or whatever it is, a score. He had to have a two, or he had to have a three to be in there, and he took it over and got a three. But the grade that he had, I think it lined out for a two. But that was NCAA situation.
Is that not picking up what you're talking about?
If this, if we do this, what you're saying is we need to incorporate this. This minute will allow that to take place, correct?
We'll allow it to take place. It also sets up standards by which, you know, it's not, it's not for your high flyers. It's not for students who've had a B-plus and then wanted an A-plus. And so, taking it again to try to move forward, it sets the standard that it has to be a C or lower. The student must make a written request. The board's principal for seats must be available in the class.
That's just part of my question. So, does this, does our policy state that children that have precedence for those that would be failing, they have the precedence? Or we get preferential, they would be first? Only if they have room, then these other students will be available?
Yes.
And does this move, run into any increased cost? Where if we don't have a number, whatever, we had students doing that just to raise grades, did that result in increased cost to us? Would we have to pay more teachers to, to do that? If that's the case, I'm wondering why we would. Now, I understand for children might be failing, but just raising.
Okay, so...
I guess my, the question is, why would we have a policy just to do that, just for the sake of doing it? If it's going to result in increased cost or...
So, the change, there was a change in school board, the state school board policy last year that, that made it possible, didn't even offer.
But there's also a stipulation, there must be space available, like for students that are assigned, those students who are taking the course, or if they're paying for their course.
And it's at the high school level only, so you're not talking about...
I understand that.
But a class, I shouldn't think it happened.
What Nancy said, that's probably this young lady in Highlands, it made a difference for her, getting her chance to go on. So, I think the principals still has control over not abusing it, but maybe giving these people opportunity to continue on their course.
And I think that's the most likely outcome, is that we're talking about if you're going to let a grade of C or lower in the class, and you need to retake it in order to be admitted, or qualify for a scholarship, or something along those lines. It's the kind of thing that might make that difference.
Now, the rule for, the rule for NCAA athlete now, as this has progressed over the years, if I'm not mistaken, they not take them summer athletes.
I think the comments answered my question. So, basically, we're at a stage where only bedroom, then we can, we can consider doing it. We're not under any grounds to expand classes, just to accommodate students. I want to try to do that. And I'm looking at Nancy Carroll, and as long as we do that, we're not going to, it shouldn't incur any additional cost to, to expand the classes or anything like that, correct? Or could it result in that?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll show it.
John, I'm not from the boards, but I can be able to explain. Credit by demonstrating mastery. Particularly beginning with 2014, they tend to super technical shout.
And this may be another place where we need to, to get the input of our capable administrators about whether they have, this is, this has been the law for a little while now. And I, I know we had some discussion about when it first came into being. I seem to remember, Nancy, you were kind of letting through what it is.
Yeah, we, we had the opportunity. No one has taken advantage of it in our county to this point.
To give you the background on what it is, it is a, another fairly new change in state board policy that said, where certain classes, a student can, I mean...
Test out.
Qualify in a certain, yeah, through certain testing, and also, I think in, in some, in like CTE classes, it's a, it's more like a body of work kind of thing.
Well, it all starts with testing.
Right.
And if they get a certain percent, I think they have more than 95% talent. And then, they do a portfolio for, like you said, some type of project that a committee works at. Most kids don't get past the testing. And, and we've looked, we've been shown in our western region, how many kids take the test, and how many actually pass it. And it's very few. That includes the EOCs, or the NCAA finals, or even the CTE. Very few get past that. So, it's pretty rigorous.
And you're required to offer it in some way. It's supposed to be possible to try to take it, but it's, it's no, there's no guarantee that any students can place out of it because there are high school students.
Do you have additional concerns?
Uh, no, sorry, I just wanted to make sure that the board understood what that is, state school board policy.
Well, you asked us something, I'll tell you something else underneath the surface. We'll make sure we...
Okay.
I got you.
And then, Mr. Chairman, unless there are any questions about that policy, or any of the rest of them have entertained any of those, wise, these are all ready for your consideration.
Any board members have any questions? Or anyone that, or any of those that you want John to focus on in more detail? So, what is the board's pleasure? Would you like to approve these?
I think they're all second reading.
No, they're not.
They are. Well, some of them we had on, they're on, they're noted on there as second reading, because we did have them last month. But again, your new policies, your new policy, you can change this if the board wants to have a required second reading for every amendment to existing policy. You can do that. But your current policy says, if it's an amendment to an existing policy, you can just take it on.
I read it over here, because I read it over there. That's Dr. Paul P. had, and he got his opinion, and then I laughed over there. Instead, I looked it over, and it seemed like anything drastic change, and it felt comfortable, good intention on it.
Entertained a motion. So, moved. Your motion being that we approve all of the amendments as presented.
All of them.
Now, motion, we approve all of the policy updates that's presented. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Have a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, same as saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and you oppose. So, a move. I think I'm right. Next is buildings and grounds. Sorry. It's right in front of my mouth. I have not cooperated with me here. Freeman instruction. Carol, K-2 report card.
Okay, we're in the process of redoing our K through two report cards. They were last revised 15 years ago. Progress reports now are sent from grades three through 12 through Power School. And so, we think it's a good time now to start looking at K through two report cards coming through Power School as well. So, we started our venture this spring after they revamped the reporting system for K through two, and the possibility of using Power School. And a lot of school systems are doing that now. So, the first thing we decided to do is we surveyed all of our K through two parents to see what they were thinking about this. They were very supportive. The results of our parent surveys yielded that. They would still like to have the report cards to be subject-based. The choices are, are they subject-based, reading, writing, written, big, science subjects, et cetera? Or, we can also drill down and have standards-based report cards, where we look at the reading standards, and speak specifically to what the parts of reading the child has progressed in, where they are in the reading curriculum. Parents are also, you know, that, that's okay, one, two, three, four, or satisfactory, unsatisfactory. It was pretty evenly split there. One of the things they do want to see is that with K through two report cards, and we're doing that now as well, is they still want to see all subjects graded, art, music, P.E. They think that's also very important, to continue to do that. And also, they want to make sure, 94% wanted to make sure that we still include behavior, citizenship, and participation for our little folks. So, and we all agree that that's very important as well. So, then when we did the staff surveys, all teachers in grades K through two, they were a lot, they were very, very similar. Some of the teachers, the only variation that I would know was the fact that we, teachers would like to use more standards-based, instead it's just subjects. You know, you can put reading down, but I think when you're looking at the reading curriculum, you need to talk about the different facets of the reading curriculum, and see where the child is progressing, and what they need to work on. So, we're still working on that, and we're having that discussion. So, what I want to let you know is we're, we're still working on this. We cannot print out a sample yet through Power School with our reading and math, and all the other subjects related, so that you can see what this is going to look like, not until June. So, what we hope to do, we're meeting with all of our teachers. We've been meeting a lot, going over all the things with, or to the report cards. But I hope to have you a sample in June to look at, see what you think with regards to changing over to a Power School-based report card. The teachers would use a grade book in Power School. When children master a skill, they can go ahead and denote that in Power School, and accept it. And so, basically, they can print out report cards at any time. They, our progress reports from those report cards. And I think it's the way we need to be, that's this direction we need to go. Grades two through 12 are doing it now, and we just need to make sure our K through two take a lot of this. But I'm, this is an informational thing, as we go through this and work with our teachers, and try to determine what needs to be placed on those report cards. There will still be places to write comments, and parental replies on that. But this is just an informational thing to let you know where, where we're going, and to make sure you're good, and if you have any suggestions with regard to this process.
Any plan on implementing this next school year?
We hope to implement it next school year.
And the sample, do you think we'll have enough time for parent input after they've seen the sample, that we can incorporate their input on what?
It's going to look very similar to what we would have.
Okay.
Because we've done, we've done all the reading, but it's a lot of standards-based, and a lot of the reading things already denoted on there. It's just going to come through Power.
My sole concern is to make sure, make sure that we have where it's, but you know, you know where I'm headed, Nancy.
Everybody's really excited about it. The teachers are ready for change. Actually, they started this discussion three years ago, and so...
Anyone else? Questions? Carol?
I'll keep you posted on our, currently on this, but at some point, I want you to look at them, and then when you decide you'd like me, you'll support that. Or not support it, whatever, put the vote on. Feel free to love our...
Show us the contract.
Sure, we'll. I'll have that for you next meeting.
Did you?
The next one, summer reading camp. We've talked about this last year. The final, we're soon to be tested today. So, let's, we start out with 300 and some odd third graders on Read to Achieve. We finished testing the EOGs. We did the Read to Achieve today, and we are down to 37 students in third grade summer reading camp. And as you know, third grade, it is required that we offer a summer reading camp for those students. We are 37 students. In second grade and first grade, we send invitations to those parents of those students, and those students need remediation based on their scores that we've used benchmarking all year long. And right now, in the Franklin area, we have 37 third graders that are required to come to summer reading camp. We have 32 second graders that parents have accepted invitations, and would like for their children to participate. And we have nine first graders. This summer camp will be held June 12th through 30th at South Plankton from eight to one. I would invite you to drop in. It's a wonderful program. The kids are very, they get, they get really excited with some of the activities and things that we do with them. And I think it's very, very worthwhile. I'd like to thank David Childling-Trenchen. They're going to provide breakfast and lunch for these children from eight to one. And also, Todd's working very hard on providing transportation.
Is that down from this, how many of your students?
We're about where we are where last year.
How is it?
About the same.
You said Franklin, so Highlands and...
Okay, in Nana Hala, at this point in time, they don't have any students that need to come for Read to Achieve. They were going past.
Pretty amazing, Todd.
In Highlands, all third grade students, and that is the state requirement, all third grade students at Highlands, passed. We have seven students in grades one through two that parents have expressed an interest in by invitation, that they would like for those students to receive some remediation. And so, we're going to provide that through our summer reading camp.
So, we'll still just go at the same time in Highlands?
Yes.
And then Hala has none?
Has none. Not this year.
First year we did this, Carol, can you press one more? How many students we have?
We were looking at 180.
First year wasn't, and now we're down to 37.
Well, I guesstimated, I said 32.
Okay, 32.
When I looked at all the third grade, I guesstimated 32. Well, actually, when the final testing came in today, we're looking at 37, and of those 37, four were absent that were testing in the morning. So, if those four children passed, then we're looking at 33.
I should have comparison, when we first started, we had 180. So, somewhere, our teachers are step...
I want to tell you something. I am so proud, I am so proud of what our teachers, our parents, administration, everybody's doing. It's working. Our teachers are working very hard, and our students and parents. And, and you can see, when you look at our test scores, our numbers are going down.
I know here in Nana Hala, my granddaughter Delaney has a reading problem. And the teachers have worked, it's just absolutely been great the way they have worked with her. And she called me at, at work the other day, and she said, Manny, I have some good news and some bad news. Wish you went first. And I said, well, go ahead and get the bad news over with. And she said, I failed the reading test. I'm just lying, the good news is I passed. So, she was really excited. And she worked really hard for it, but they really worked with her and helped her, and worked very, very hard, and missing a lot of progress.
She definitely does not receive anything, and a little bit more each year.
I'd like to begin with this form, and her entire performance team, I know that they work hard, and the grade I made, and I've several other issues that just all kinds of places, and I think it's, it's...
No, I went to the summer camp, Dr. Baldwin, last year, and it was absolutely, almost bring a tear to y'all to watch those children, and the interaction they had with it. So, it's, I'm very proud of everyone.
They are.
That's tackled this whole project, and the results that we're having is outstanding. So...
Actually, we have received calls from parents. My child did not qualify to go to summer reading camp, but can they go anywhere? We would think it'd be wonderful. We just, our children weren't too scared. So, that, that's, that's wonderful, and it's a good note on behalf of this person.
How many years was that for you? What was the year it was 180? Was the first year?
This is my third year.
So, it's three years since I've gone from 180, you have made it 30, 45.
We'll bring down your father in that next year.
We're working on it.
Very good. Please pass on to Dr. Baldwin. He said about everyone involved. We're very, very proud, and very impressed. So, especially with what it's doing. You know, we all know her, they don't know about it, K three, after third grade, if they don't, they're not where they need to be, we lose.
Well, it's not what it said, with our, the reading bonuses, when we looked at those for our third grade, for throughout the entire system.
And no third grade teacher is moving this year.
No.
These scores like this are not moving.
There you go. Anything else, Carol? Problem?
No, I'm fine.
Very good, thank you. Now, it's too hard to dismiss them. Mr. Bryan?
Mr. Chairman, the Jefferson Board, I'd like to add to what Ms. Arnold had just said with our Read to Achieve, 100% at Nana Hala school this year. The reading EOGs, we took off our EOGs last week. Our reading scores went from a school-wide 58% to 69% this year, in those third through eighth grade, all DOGs. Our science scores went 75% to 81%. And our math scores went from 34% to 60%. So, with those impressive numbers, I'd like the board's permission to release early, on Friday at 11 o'clock, to report these children on the final job they have done.
Good idea. Plus, you go to graduation, then.
Plus, we have graduation Friday night at 6:00.
The thing is, I've been hearing, everybody wants to talk, I have to go Friday. So...
Our buses wouldn't affect any other schools, so we run our own. We're not connected to elementary schools, like high school, middle school.
Say.
Bring the motion.
So, moved.
Okay, sorry. I think we're fine. Yeah. I have motion to say, all in favor, same as saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, you oppose. So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, same as President. Buildings and grounds. Ms. Gibbs?
Highlands Rec Department, like to use activity bus for the program in June 5th, August 15th. I believe we've done that years and a half. Standard usage.
Sorry, we have not more here. This is standard we've done every year, in terms of with Highlands. They have a bus for their summer camp, so...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Very good. Second. Any discussion? All in favor, same as saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, you oppose. So moved. Chamber of Commerce?
Same thing July 4th. They, I believe they use yellow bus drivers. They hire them out. We let them use the white buses to show people from, I believe it's from the high school, down to the red car for barbecue and fireworks.
Did they also request them for the actual barbecue festival? Did you get that?
Yes, barbecue festival, festival.
Was it, I didn't see it in this, is all this, it's all in this request, correct?
Yeah, 4th of July, barbecue, barbecue festival.
But they have a separate barbecue festival, so you're taking it that they, they're asking for both events?
Yes.
Good. Let's have a look at it.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
We all set on that?
Yes, sir.
July 28th?
Yes, sir. Buses are lined up, dropped there.
Basically, the question, Chamber of Commerce, to use our buses in two different festivals or two different times. Any discussion? Got your motion?
So moved.
Have a motion that we approve the request. Right here, second.
Right.
Have a motion, second. All in favor, same as saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, you oppose. So moved. I don't, shall I call this SIPs?
SIP.
Oh, SIP. We have an S on here. SIP phone systems. Tim?
Okay. For the past few years during budget sessions, I've let everyone know about the reduction and elimination of E-Rate funding for phone services. That was reduced from what we used to get 80% reimbursement for phone services, down to 20 this, this E-Rate cycle, and to nothing the next E-Rate cycle. So, we've been looking, and when we do the E-Rate RFPs, we've been looking at different phone services and biz that we get. We currently have HUTS services, which is plenty of telephone services, just normal phone lines from a phone company. We budget about $62,000 a year for that, with all communications.
I'm missing something, Tim. I'm kind of ignoring their line of...
Box, box service, by the telephone.
Oh.
I don't care, that's what's called, HUTS service. We, we, we budget $62,000.
They're all those trying to be serious, Mr. Tim, sorry.
No, it's good, that's a... No, $62,000 for budgeted telecommunication services, $59,000 plus goes to the phone services that we do. We started realizing we'd save a lot of money by going through SIPs lines, which is phone services over the internet to our phone system here. It's about $18,000 instead of $59,000, let's say. So, that's about $40,000, $43,000 a year we would save with this. The problem is, we need to update some of our phone systems in some of our schools to, so they'll have the ability to, to use the SIPs. We started looking at the different methods of delivering that, and the cheapest way that we can come up with is leverage some of the analog systems that we have in the system, upgrading some of our servers, our phone service initiatives. That hardware cost would be about $148,000 that, like, those, those hardware pieces, and the phone systems in the schools. We have four brand-new systems that we take from four of our schools that we, we don't want to get rid of. So, if we, if we go that route, we can keep those four systems, leverage those four systems, leverage the analog phone lines that are in classrooms in the schools. $148,000 is what it would take to bring all the phone systems in all the schools up to SIPs compatibility. What we had originally planned on, there's two options on payment on this. What we originally planned on was a five-year lease on this, and we're prepared and vested to go ahead with this, and this year is funded. But by paying it upfront, $148,000, we'll save $33,000 in this cost, in the financial charges, if we pay it all upfront. So, that's, that's an option two, and that's why I'm kind of worried to think that we decide if we want to go ahead with this on the system, or if we want to get it paid all upfront.
And Tim, when you say pay it all upfront, you mean, did that involve a contractor hired to go around and make...
Yes, which we did, a bid process, we ordered back, we already done that, and $148,000 was what it would be in comeback. Contractor would come and put the systems in, program all the SIPs lines.
So, that's all, that's all ready to be invested in?
Yeah, it was only due to...
Is the $148,000, that's if we do the lease, or is it another $33,000 above the $148?
It would actually come to $181,000.
If we did the five-year lease.
So, were you going to cover any of the $148,000 a year?
We, we already have, Angie, I'm trying to remember, doesn't have, we need some, $27,000 for this year, for the lease.
So, basically, what the board would be looking at would be 128, which means that in four years' time, we would more than save that money.
Yeah, $40,000 a year.
And it saves us 30, plus that 33. I mean, pay for seven, four years, just the cost savings, plus we do it now, we save an additional 33,000. And Dr. Baldwin, I think I looked at you, we have the money to fund those, to do this thing.
Yes, sir.
Second.
I think it would be crazy to spend another $33,000 if we could do it upfront.
It makes sense, but if you're going to spend money on, what, you're spending it on something that's going to save us $40,000.
Right. It'll pay us back.
Tim, you think you propose a contract?
Um, we can sign a contract, we can, the county doesn't require a contract, just a purchase.
Were you in the middle of that?
Yes, sir.
So, just your, just to make your approval contingent.
Well, what's the contract? Those were five years, we paid it all upfront.
There would, there would have to be a different contract if you wanted to do this.
Right. Then you must be very comfortable with supporting it.
I am, as you know, as a vendor, then we always use for our phones, just NCI, because the phone system is the same plus district as a lot of schools.
And they're local, so if we have issues, we...
Yeah, NCI is actually the installer.
Here.
Did you talk about the savings for long-distance services at each school?
Oh, yeah, we left that out as well. There's also additional savings of about $12,000 a year in long-distance charges across the SIPs lines, having 1,100 minutes of long-distance from my, my current line. So, I would never use all that at school. So, we'll eliminate all of our long-distance charges by the...
Those charges go directly to the school, same thing, and also child nutrition.
Exactly. Yeah, those schools are usually paying about $50 to $150 a month for long-distance charges.
So, what possibly be the reason why we wouldn't?
Good question.
Thank you. So, your motion in?
To accept, as we go.
Have a motion, and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, same as saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, you oppose. So moved. Very good decision. Thank you, Tim, for your work on there. That's kind of the thing, my organization has done that very thing, so I appreciate it. Blazing amendments. Angie, state current expenses, federal, all those, we'll approve them all at the same time.
Okay, the first, we have saved, we have additional revenue, $69,800 in April, so the bulk of that...
Okay. Have a motion, and a second, any other discussion? Here and done, all in favor, someone saying aye?
Aye.
You oppose, so moved, very good decision, thank you, Tim, for your work on that, all right. That's kind of the thing, my organization has done that very thing, so I appreciate it. Budgets and amendments, Angie, state current expense and federal, will it, will it, all those will approve all at the same time?
Okay, the first thing we have saved, which we have additional revenue, sixty-nine thousand eight hundred dollars in aid for STEM. The bulk of that is the O M nine category, Tim, we'll scroll up together. That's just the amount that we have to appropriate for the benefits and stuff that are paid out, and this time of year we thought, except, obviously, people retired and stuff, so that's what annual leave pay out, so the state covers that, but we do have that, so that's the bulk of it. We do have additional seventy-five hundred dollars, and we touched on the bonuses. What happened was PRC forty-six. What the state did was they gave us the original allotment, and those teachers got that undergrad rating bonus back in January. And then, for whatever reason, if a teacher was not eligible, like if they didn't, like Dr. Bottom said, to an undergraduate level, they were not eligible for the bonus out of state funds. So all that money reverted back to the state, then they divvied it back up and they sent it out, and those same teachers that had received it in January got an additional thousand dollars. And that went out, uh, I think I'll take this check, um, right, so that's the amendment to cover the reversion of the money that went back, and then the coming back, the presentation for those actual, for the actual thousand dollars. Um, the rest of it is minor, it's twenty-one hundred dollars from PRC O O three, and then a sixty-four dollar, uh, interest fund to improve technology. The next link is current expense. The only additional revenue in that is, um, Medicaid, we've seen Medicaid settlement for this full year fifteen. So we got that check last week, so that's just the additional revenue, thirty-three thousand two ninety-two, the other amendments are just moving money toward actually spending it throughout the year and each one. Federal amendments are, there's no additional revenue or anything, that's just the same thing, moving money from, where it's supplies and materials, like used computers, at this level, whatever.
Any questions? Have a motion, have a motion, we, we, all three is presented, or here a second. Have a motion, a second, any other discussion? And here and done, all in favor, someone saying aye?
Aye.
You oppose, so moved. Angie, you begin, impact both state and local budgets.
Okay, so we wanted to talk a little bit about the Senate budget proposal, and one of the concerns that we have right now is if the Senate budget passes, we will no longer be able to do waivers out of A I G fund, which is academically gifted, and L E P, which is our ESL. So currently, uh, this year, for example, we waived three hundred and ninety thousand nine hundred and sixty-eight dollars. That's about seven and a half, a little over seven and a half teachers for us. And what we're able to do is put those teachers that are in those programs on the O O one allotment for our state. And that, because they're, because of where they're at on the grade and staff and their years of experience, they're higher paid. So what we do is put them on O O one, state covers their costs, we move this money, and we pick up lower-paid teachers. So out of what? So we move that money, we move it to O one O, which is also a state-approved account for us to be able to do this. Pick up seven and a half teachers, like Dr. Bottom said, moves those teachers off of global, puts them back on state. So we say, well, the dollar favor. So that would be seven and a half, roughly seven and a half positions that we would lose next year, because we will not, we would lose the flexibility to be able to waive that.
And it equates up to, seven and a half position equates up to how much money?
About three hundred and ninety thousand.
And when do we expect to have those lots on this?
Well, it has to pass, and we're, we're waiting on the House budget right now, and that's supposed to be out this week, is my understanding, so then they will have to go to conference and agree, and then whatever happens.
So really, we cannot make any kind of decisions on that because it's all the fifth?
No, but that's, that's true, that's one of the impacts that if that passes.
But it's a positive impact that we have to kind of print about in, in saying.
And, and part of that too is there's, right now, there's a proposed ten percent reduction to simple office administration. Right now, that would be about fifty-six thousand dollars for us, so that's a middle position.
That's in, that's in seventy, eighteen, eighteen, nineteen, another.
Eighteen, nineteen, it's fifteen percent reduction. So that's over, that's about one and a half positions.
Just to clarify, we're, we use some of our central office mode.
Now.
We waive that and use it, pick it up, and that's it.
So in addition to that, in addition to the state budget, the proposed county budget is also includes another two hundred thousand dollar reduction this year, just like it did last year. So that's three point eight seven positions.
So the commissioners are considering taking that two hundred thousand away from us this year?
Yes, yes, another reduction.
Okay, well, we've already.
We don't stop reductions, it's just, it was the same level we worked last year, correct?
It's a reduction from two years ago.
From two years ago, but not that reduction.
Continued reduction from last year.
And the other thing, Tim, is that last year, uh, we were, uh, we were direct into appropriate two hundred thousand dollar bon bounce to maintain seven point three two eight in our operating expense. Without that direction, I would not recommend pass appropriate kind of bon bounce to cut the positions.
Been here, done, then.
They don't, commissioners are aware that we possibly could lose another seven and a half? I mean, we don't have that to cut anymore, I mean, I'm, I'm here already trying to work out another kindergarten teacher.
And it's in the Senate budget proposal, so yes.
Just to clarify.
We did have a meeting where the commissioners come up on June eighth.
And of course, the governor's proposed budget did not include this, apart from discussing, but the Senate does, and the House will now have to take it up, and they're going to offer their version. And use it when happens, correct me if I'm wrong, this is all, this is conjecture, usually, there's going to be some type of compromise, but some portion of that will be incorporated into the budget.
Yes.
I mean, this story, John, I looked at you too, you've seen this, so what we're faced with, based on the actions of the past, we are going to have another cut up because of this, this elimination of waivers. May not be three, three hundred and ninety, but it's going to be another cut.
And I'm not game.
I know that, I'm, I'm, I'm about to get sick to my stomach with, with one of those news.
But I'm also concerned with yours, that, that the commissioners are considering the two hundred thousand dollar continued production for us, because we have no more positions, in fact, I'm asking for another position, because it's needed, so, and you're telling me that that's.
And we require by law, if that owes out to a kind of.
Right, so still, if there's no money there, what is it, I mean, you're telling me that that's the.
All right, Angie, let's hear the, let's hear the rest of it.
So that's, that's a total of eleven, roughly eleven and a half positions. So the H B thirteen, which is now A law, K three class size, forces us to basically add six additional positions. So we need.
Not this year, but the following school year, not this upcoming school year, but the year after that.
Right, right.
No.
Is that not right?
Well, she's talking about lost the waiver she came by.
Yes, I'm sorry.
That wasn't, okay, that's something different.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Part of H B thirteen.
Yeah.
Okay, not the actual, with the class size, but this is.
Sorry about that. And, but what we're, what they're going to do is, instead of giving us one allotment, which is PRC O O one for our teachers, which we typically get a hundred and ninety-nine point five positions, that's what, uh, we're estimating for this year. They are going to divide it into two categories, and one of them will be K through five, and the other one will be six through twelve. K through five, we will not be able to do any waivers out. To move to.
We've done in the past, we've done.
Well, they just give us a hundred and ninety-nine, and you can use.
Use whatever we need to, for now, there's no flexibility, that has to.
Then we'll not be any flexibility.
If H B thirteen does figure into this, it's like what they did to say, okay, we're going to give you this flexibility of all the class sizes, and then in the budget they said, and you're locked into those positions on K through five. Can't transfer.
Now, the six through twelve, you can transfer, but they're only going to give you the dollar amount for a beginning teacher. So you would have to.
And how many teachers do you have in that, in that particular segment of our teachers? What less they do than we did.
Now, the good news to this is the K through twelve special allotment, we cancel that.
The bill that Senator Davis.
The next payment.
And they're going to.
Not totally, but it would go toward, because we don't know yet, but it could offset.
It could offset.
It's just going to offset the K five.
Yeah.
So it's not going to help us with the Senate part, as once you said, it's only going to help offset what we're talking about right now.
Well, if they give us six extra positions.
That would offset the waiver.
So how many positions do we have, do we have to cut based on what we send?
Oh, that one has.
And that is with the small school, we'll be passed.
We have one and a half positions to cut now.
If it doesn't pass, we're looking at.
Twenty-six, seventeen?
We need to do something forward, instead of just trying to scratch through every meeting, trying to get back to, we are, you are, not being, that's what they're talking about. The state, we're scratching the state well.
Well, and.
And that's, that's not fair to students and teachers.
These are.
These are proposed, they're not yet been enacted, but we, we can just about expect some compromised version of those to be coming down, so while it may not be seventeen, it, it could be, it couldn't be.
And I would just like to say, um, that, uh, thank goodness that Senator Davis and Representative Corbin have been working on that small school year, though. We definitely did love that school.
Well, and I also would like to interject about, I believe that the county commissioners are extremely pro education, and I believe that they will listen to what we have to say and take into consideration, and possibly not. You see what we need, and I think they are, um, very interested to hear that we're being successful, what we're doing, and, um, I know Highland School is in top four percent right now. Ms. Arnold has just presented that our third grade is excelling from our, our numbers, and I believe the county commissioners have a vested interest in keeping our schools where they're at and moving forward, and I believe they will listen to our issues and help us. I believe there's a lot of them, and I, I know some of them personally, they're, you know, very, very student.
And another hit, our local budget this year was a loss of a hundred thousand dollars in teamwork sales. I don't know if that's going to be recurring law, I, I mean, I haven't heard anything about the teamwork sales, but.
Everything I've heard is.
We did lose a hundred thousand dollars this year.
But everything we hear says that will continue.
Title two is, any federal money right now is up for question, I mean, I have no idea, but there was a question about title two funds, and if that goes through and we lose that fund, we would also lose two additional teaching positions for that, because those two people pay out, two teachers pay out.
I'd like to make one point about the K through twelve. That I don't believe Senator Davis and now Representative Corbin went into this to fight for us for a lifeline to make a count. They went in fighting the legislature, this is the second session in a row, that they went in fighting the legislature to make us better. This was supposed to be a positive step to take us to a new level, not a lifeline, I mean, I don't think it should have been a lifeline.
Anyway.
They're going to us as a life reserve. You know, this.
I know, you, you look a lot on that as well.
Yeah, and the attitude was from the get-go, that this was to improve the quality for students and teachers for education made, again, and not to help us to remain at the same level we were. In all fairness, to bring us to where the other candidate is in our situation.
We just.
Get the same advantage.
Our two schools, which we love, now having Highland, costs us more money, and that was an attempt to offset that, to, as you say, bring us up level where we're, in essence, getting funding that most districts get, and that's what it is. Angie, I'm really saying, you answered my question, I asked, do you have any more wonderful news for us?
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, you're sure.
The only thing we can say that's there is that that is not yet been enacted, so we don't know for sure, and that's part of the whole issue, correct me if I'm wrong, make this thing our goal, and as we try to do a budget, we're trying to make a budget in face of the uncertainties like what we're talking about, which makes it an almost impossible task.
It's, it's pretty challenging.
I agree, it's pretty challenging. It's your best guess.
And as that pointed out, I mean, the, the example that she gave was Highland's kindergarten, they said twenty-three or twenty-four thirds. If it's twenty-four, by law, we have to put two teachers up there. We have several situations like that throughout the county, we're not exactly sure how many students we're going to have in first grade, we're not exactly sure how many students we're going to have in second grade. We, we may not know until the tenth day of school, how, how many teachers we'll need. And we're projecting things based on how many kids we have in first grade and second grade this year. That doesn't mean that ten kids won't move out over the summer, or thirty kids won't move in over the district. And we've seen those things, we've seen at least six students move into South Macon since spring break. It's challenging.
Where are we as far as South Macon, bringing that up, with those students who have had, as we discussed before, facility, you know, lack of, where are we as far as buying?
We're about at the end of the road, um, we, the plan is to convert a computer lab down there next year and, and add additional classrooms. After that, um, we have no other options. We'll have to look at, um, mobile units, possibly, additional classroom space somehow. Redistricting is pretty much out of, um, consideration right now, based on, um, the class size limitations that we're looking at at other schools. The only school that really has any additional space, um, is Iowa Valley, I think they have one, just a classroom, two.
What, what, what does that entail for the education of those students, um, in the media center?
We're going to put the computer lab in the library, maybe the center, so they'll have access to the computers. All I can say is thank God for good teachers at South Macon, because they, they're going to be faced with some challenges this year in terms of just the number of students that they're working with in their classroom, if you're just having that many students in the facility down there, it's going to be challenging. Cafeteria is going to be challenged, custodians will be challenged.
Anything else, my awful loss words back on the end tonight, and so anything else, any other board members would like to bring up or discuss?
That, 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 that.
It just doesn't seem to get any better.
I know, but you know what, we have prevailed thus far, and our teachers do an absolutely phenomenal job, and so are our administrators, so that's stopped doing, I mean, I'm not a person in this system and getting a great efficiency.
I, I really wish that, um, that the teachers in Macon got the true appreciation that they deserve, because we do have outstanding teachers in Macon. It's not to say that we don't have some challenges that we have to deal with in that arena as well, and we do, but, um, the teachers that we have in Macon, I would put them up against any other, like, set of teachers anywhere else in the country.
I think you know, and I said, I'm, I'm saying, people don't should save the state, anywhere in the nation's worth of concern. As we've seen, it's about like Carol was told, this is, that's, that's an indicator of what, what we accomplish, Chris, the challenges, challenges are. Yeah, no other comments, I will entertain the motion that we adjourn. So what else we got, too, I'm sorry.
Bob is counting.
I was feeling so good, and we had a nice meal, and I reached a stage where I'm associated with my stomach, I'm just frustrated, excuse myself, and put down the hall. How was that? Does that kind of tell you how I'm feeling right now? Word of education information, anything, Dr. Vol, from the writing in your, in your coming advance, please?
Graduation season is upon us. Thursday night at Holly Springs Baptist Church, June academy, we'll have a graduation at sixteen p.m. Tuesday, six p.m., I have a graduation, we'll be here in the gym again. Saturday, twenty-seventh, five p.m., Highland graduation will be in, at the Highland New Gym, which is what New.
That's true, we still call it the new gym for everyone.
Has New.
It does, and it doesn't leave. Thank you for that.
Monday, May twenty-ninth, Memorial Day. Tuesday, the thirtieth, uh, we'll honor Shirley Park, Shirley Park's retirement party, we're going to, um, at Park Hall. Tuesday, May thirtieth, uh, through June the second, we have Lincoln Bell Training at Central Office. Thursday, June the first, will be Franklin High School graduation, seven p.m. at W C U. And Monday, the twenty-sixth, we are, actually, we changed that.
Yes, we could do it on the twenty-seventh, Thursday, thanks for changing.
Can we, Renee, will you check?
That's okay, it's, it's okay, it's fine.
Maybe we're going to, not to attend now.
I do not remember, seem like we have, I have something, I don't, I think, I just don't remember all what her schedule is, she's got a huge calendar, and I don't.
From what I saw today, they're coming back from that trip to the, or to the river, so she doesn't, she shouldn't have anything that night.
On the twenty-seventh?
Twenty-seventh. They go on Monday and twenty-sixth to go rafting.
So if I'm done with her, I'll be back?
Yeah, she's supposed to be back by three o'clock that afternoon.
Okay, so, it sounds good.
So, we, do we need, go ahead, I think we don't need to vote on the bottom now.
So, we need to take, make a vote that we will change our June meeting from the twenty-sixth to the twenty-third, correct? No, twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh, I really am, totally, totally. Do I hear a motion that we change our June meeting to the twenty-seventh, which will be that Tuesday night, very good motion.
So, I hope they can...
Very good second.
Right.
All in favor, see if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? So moved. Anything else? Now, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'm making my own...
And a second. Thank you all, thank everyone for coming, we're not too late.